No. Okay. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Brookfield Select Board meeting for March 2, 2023. Please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements. I'd ask that you join me for a moment of silence for Bertha Nolan, who passed away at the age of 97 on February 24. Bertha was a lifelong resident of Brookfield. She worked for the town in the collector's office and the town clerk's office. She read to Brookfield preschool and elementary school children and was known as Mother Goose. Thank you for that. All right, so we'll move on to approve the warrants. Brad, did you want to give a report on those?
Sure. I vote to approve the warrants FY 2317, accounts payable $294,824.67. FY 2317 payroll $182,340.47. FY 2317 withholding $69,041.68. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Right. First item on the agenda is a public hearing to vote on early voting for the next election. We have a letter from the town clerk. So they're writing the follow-up regarding the voting on the agenda item. The reason why they're asking to not allow for early voting was that, let's see here, as you know, legislature now allows for mail-in voting for primaries and state elections. Local municipal elections can have them as well unless the select boards vote by roll call not to. There are a few reasons I'm requesting that the selectmen opt out of mail-in voting. The first is cost. Holding a special election along with the general, we exhausted our expense and wages accounts. I've already requested the advisory board for an additional $2,500 from the reserve fund for election expense account, and I will also be requesting to supplement the wages account as there's not enough money to cover the wages for the election. I'd also like to note that residents who cannot make it to the polls can request an absentee ballot. I understand that you would like to get a determination of vote-by-mail numbers. The state primary ballots mailed was 430. State primary ballots returned by mail, $390. Cost was $361. State election ballots mailed was 716, returned was 630. Cost of the election ballots mailed was $601.44. Despite all of this, the numbers did not improve voter participation in either of the elections. We had 1,400 for the governor's race this past November, and in 2016, we had 1,531 votes. I guess my concern would be is how much worse would it be if they didn't have mail-in voting as an option?
Mm-hmm. You can't prove the negative.
Well, that's not what he's saying. They can still request an absentee ballot. They can still mail in and vote. It's just they can't early vote. Do you see the distinction in there? So if you can't get there, you absolutely have the option to do an absentee ballot.
You still have the option to do an absentee ballot.
Yeah. So if...
Is the absentee ballot available to anyone who wants it or is there a restriction or rule as to who can be granted an absentee ballot?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think anybody can request it if they're out of town. They can, you can't ask for an absentee ballot if you can come here, but like, because you don't feel like leaving the house. But if you're not going to be here, I believe you can. So I think that might be the only restriction. If your house found, you can ask for it.
I think that's the difference is that it gets rid of the no-excuse mail-in ballot. And I think there are some very specific restrictions on absentee ballot, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with it. I don't know for sure.
And the expenses he's citing, are those linear with regards to the number of absentee ballots? So are they a number of early voting ballots, if you will? So that if fewer people in the past had exercised that option, we would have had a lower cost?
We would not have had that cost if they didn't have the early voting because he needed people here to take and do the early voting work. So the mailing, the people had to mail the ballots out. This is directly related to the early voting, the costs.
Mm-hmm. But I guess the question is, is it directly related to the number of people who early voted? Or is it more of a fixed cost where he needs to have staff and accommodate it whether people show up or not?
I don't believe it was a fixed, it's a fixed cost.
So it's proportional to the number of people who vote? Okay.
Because he called in extra help when there were too many to do in the time limit that he had to accomplish the goal.
So my question is, what he says here, you know, state primary ballots mailed and returned by mail. When I've absentee voted, I mailed, it was mailed in, I believe.
Right, so people requested them and only that many people returned them, even though he mailed out the requested 430, only 390 or whatever the number is.
Oh, I got you. So he mailed out 430, returned and received...
And 390 took the time to mail them back.
And that was part of early voting?
Early voting, yeah. Not absentee ballot voting, those are early voting numbers.
Are there similar costs with absentee?
No, because absentee ballots...
Absentee ballot.
You can pick it up or he can mail it, but those ballots are then received and then calculated the night of the vote, the early voting, even though it's just a really different, complicated setup. But as I said, I don't have the answer to.
Because if all those people, I guess what I'm getting at, if the 430 people that requested them decided to still do absentee ballot...
They'd have to not be here, I think, though, right? I think that's the thing with absentee ballot is you have to...
You qualify for absentee ballot when you're voting in a local election if you are... Somehow I managed to...
Like, I can't, so I work out, I work over in Berkshire County, and I can't get to the voting polls because I'm not here during that time. I could have requested an absentee ballot.
Yeah, I feel like there was no reason. I mean, granted, when I have done absentee, I was out of town, but he didn't ask me to prove it or anything.
Yeah, you'll be away from your city or town on Election Day. You have a religious belief that prevents you from voting at your public polling location on Election Day, or you have a disability that prevents you from voting at your polling location. So I guess the question, do we want to put the onus on the, so for, and this is where it just, it creates an extra step for somebody that wants the absentee vote and presumes that they would be eligible for one of those categories, right? So there are people who, at the beginning of the year, said, hey, I want all of my ballots mailed. So for those people who already took that step, you know, we're telling them they need to take another step, okay? Which may be fine.
Does that apply to local? I know it applies to state and federal because those you can't vote not to do.
I don't know. That's a good question.
And I would also, I mean, this is why you probably should have been here, but I mean, like, what was the cost in prior elections when we didn't have early voting and there was...
We have had, I haven't seen, looking back in the spreadsheets, that he ran over in his voting budget.
Right.
He's level funded it every year because he's always had enough money in it, and he was down $2,500 from that one election.
From that one election.
Yeah.
Mike said you could call him if anyone had any questions. He'd be willing to...
Well, he might just not have the figures if I asked him that, though.
Yeah. Well, I guess one of the questions I would have, right, is that, how did the special election along with the general drive that much more expense and wages? Because, I mean, hypothetically, all they did was print a second ballot.
No, not even close. They had to be entered into, it's, I watched them go through it. He had two or three people working every day, some on the computer, them trying to separate the ballots and calculate and tabulate all of...
And that's because people were coming in.
Because everything was done by mail. And when they do it by mail, there's a very specific process they have to follow, and it took a lot more staff and it took weeks to get it done, which is why they've extended the amount of time to certify an election because of the mail-in ballots, because it takes so much longer to do the actual physical work behind receiving them and entering them into the state computer and separating them out.
Because they have to enter them every day versus if it's absentee, they wait, they all go in.
They have to go through every single one of them and verify their signatures, make sure that their residence is right. It's not the same as coming in, crossing your name off a list and dropping your ballot in the box. So, I'm sorry, what were you saying, Brad?
Yeah, right. No, you were basically saying what I was saying, that if they, if it's an absentee ballot, they mail it in, it all gets held until Election Day, and then they open them all up at once and throw them through.
And throw them through.
Yeah.
That doesn't work with this. These all have to be verified.
Anytime, if there's one in the mail that day, they have to figure it out, put it together, tabulate it, put it through the machine.
They don't put it through the machine until that day, but they have to verify it. They got to match up signatures, which means they've got to go through signature guards and...
I think my understanding is they have to have it ready so that it's just, when the day, when Election Day comes, they just take all the ballots that have been received and they put them through the machine because all the pre-check has been done.
Right.
It's as though they've just been submitted, ready for putting into the tabulator.
But the pre-checking and running it through the state system and running it through the town's records is very cumbersome.
The cost numbers here in his, is that just mailing cost or was that the staffing cost also of the special processing that the early voting required?
Well, he's asking for $2,500 more, which includes the staffing costs. I don't see that, and I don't know if that was just the mailing cost.
Yeah, that's what I...
Because why would he ask for $2,500 extra that he went under? Or that's what he's anticipating the upcoming one is going to cost, but he ran out of money.
Well, he ran out of money because we ended up having an extra election than we usually do.
He's budgeted the same amount of money every year for multiple years.
But the special.
And we have, and there are town elections and federal elections in the fall.
Right, but we had an extra election.
But the town election in the fall, I think, was not, is not typical. We, the town special election was...
Well, the town special election was not, but an election in the fall is not untypical with the state.
Something that doesn't make sense here is we've been doing this mail-in voting and early voting for, what, two years now?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think, I don't think early voting...
20 was the first big election of the pandemic, and then the 22, the most recent state/federal election, 22, was, I expect, the second one.
Yeah. So, I don't know.
I mean, really, Mike's the one that you should be asking these questions to because he's the one who's got the data.
Do you want to put him on the phone?
I think I see what you're getting at, and where my concern is, there's 390 people of 700 people that voted that took advantage of those. So the people that are actually voting, a large portion of them came in.
Yeah, actually, though, he didn't, he didn't give us the full numbers to judge that, and that's one of the things that, you know, it's...
I'm calling right now.
Yeah. But for example, so actually, what it is, is that 630 of the 1,481 folks that voted in the fall election voted by mail. Okay? So nearly half of the town voted via mail or chose to vote.
Hi, Mike, the select board would like to speak here. I'm going to put you on speaker.
But only, no, but you're looking at the state election. He's asking for the local election, right?
Right, I understand that.
And those aren't in here, those numbers.
All right, can you hear us?
Hey, Mike, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. I think there were a number of questions around the room. I'm going to let the gentleman go first.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey, Mike, it's Tom. It's, I guess, one of the questions is that your, the cost numbers you provided for the primary, $631 and change, and the general election, general state election, $601 and change, was that just postage cost or was that the whole enchilada?
Just postage.
Postage, okay. Do you have any insight as to how much early voting cost us in total in addition, like postage and everything else, the additional staff time needed to...
Staff time? Yeah. You know, I managed to, oh, gosh, I really don't know. I couldn't, I know we get a couple Saturdays where I have somebody cover, or I was there, I was on a shift with Lois, or, so I honestly don't know, but that, that was, that wasn't so much the mailing, it was just very time consuming.
Mm-hmm. It was staff hours, I think, is what I'm hearing you say. It was your, it was, it was either your time or a clerk's time that was needed to do the work.
Do you have to be available every Saturday during early voting?
No, 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 we're not even going to do the early voting, this is really hard, it's just mail-in.
Oh, so they can early vote if they come in? It's just the mailing?
They can early vote. They can act as an absentee ballot if somebody wants, and they can, you know, do that. But to do, to do early voting, you see, the law's so messed up, the way they approach this, the local elections, for the primary and state elections, they're allowing them to say they vote. However, for a local election, mail-in voting requires, if you want to opt out, the selectmen to vote as would a roll call vote, but if you want to allow block-in voting, then that's different. You would need 50% of the registrars to say they want to do it, and then the selectmen would then have to approve that as well by roll call vote.
So this is just...
So this is just about the mail-in voting. So vote-by-mail is required for the local elections unless the select board opts out?
Right, mail-in is required unless the selectmen opt out. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, I just don't see it as being a real priority. Local elections are a bit smaller, well, significantly smaller, and, you know, the emphasis is it's a convenience factor for the primary and the general election in November, and this is what the legislature has been real supportive of. But as far as if you're looking at, you know, does this improve numbers and incentive to vote? I don't see it, you know, based on the two elections that were similar, the governor of 2018 and 2022, as you see, look those numbers over, I mean, there was actually more voters, more voters than there was mail-in.
That might also have been the candidates, though, Mike, because I think that was, yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it's definitely different.
Yeah. I mean, if you gave us the last, like, 20 governor elections, I'd be more interested in those numbers than I am from the two.
I can give you those numbers, and I can tell you that they're all between 11 and 13 and 1,400 tops, and, well, we saw 500, which is real big. The presidential election, I'll say this, that's the biggest vote turnout for 12 years I've been here. We had over 2,005 votes in 2020. And, but you see the difference, whereas 2022 wasn't a presidential election, so it's a bit smaller.
But even that presidential, was there early voting during that or no? And how many were early, how many took advantage of early voting for that?
Or mail-in.
Right.
I think about 486 or so, something along those numbers. I don't know, I didn't like to tell, I did what? I did, oh, okay, I did this year, the primary and the election.
I know we have, I know we have 45 days. What if we...
Well, what's your concern? What do you think, what do you think this is going to do if we don't allow mail-in vote? You know, what's your concern? Convenience?
My main concern would be participation, is that the...
People are used to it now.
It's, it's the, it's, this is, this is the will of the people, and so therefore, making it as easy...
You have to vote for people.
Let me, no, voting expresses the will of the people, is what I'm trying to say, Mike.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not saying early voting is the will of the people. I'm saying voting is how they express their will, and therefore, I am philosophically inclined to make it as easy as possible for the residents of the town, the citizens of the town, to vote. And so therefore, if, when I'm being asked to cut off something that, or make a change that makes it even a little bit harder, I got to think about the cost benefit and is there, like, I mean, if we saved $100,000 by doing this, it's like, okay, you got my attention. It's like, if we're saving a couple thousand dollars, I'm a little more on the fence, and it's, and it's a value call that we, that we have to make. And so we're just trying to understand the, your thought as to how many people avail themselves of this, and, I mean, and it seems like it's going to cause you, it's because of the additional expense involved, you're going to need at least $2,500 additional dollars. Your request to the Finance Committee for Reserve Fund spending, was that predicated on the expectation that there would not be mail-in voting this year?
Oh, yeah, that's, that just basically covers the ballots in the, in the cards, the active voting machine and so forth. Then I've got another outstanding bill for the census, $875, so that $2,500 figure is fairly conservative and may not cover everything on the expense front. Where we're at right now, I made a note, we have about $700 left in salary, which has got to cover election workers, so forth, so that's definitely not going to cover our election on that, so I'll be requesting at least another $1,000 for the reserve fund on that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, the question I have to you is, and I'm not expecting the hardest number possible, but in your experience, what is the estimated expense or what is the estimated savings if we take voting by mail off the table for the census of town? How much does the town save in its administration cost of the election?
You know, I honestly don't know. It's really hard to say. I mean, your guess is as good as mine. The truth of the matter is, it depends on what kind of a race we have, is it, are we going to have contested races? Is it going to be great interest? Is it going to be another year where we don't have any races? In that case, it just makes it kind of a point, probably, you know? So I honestly don't know.
Okay, fair enough. But that brings us back to, do we remove this voting option from the town?
So what I'm hearing is it's going to cost us an extra $3,500 to run the elections, regardless of what we do, and the mail-in cost is maybe, you know, somewhere between $350 and probably around $350. If 10% of it is to still allow people to mail in vote, I don't know that I have, I don't know that I have any particular will to indicate we're not going to mail in vote.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I think that $300 is postage only, and then there'd be the, on top of that would be Mike's staffing costs to process the ballots as they come in, and I don't know if he, other than postage, I don't know if he has any other expenses that are not clerks to process the mail-in ballots. I guess that'd be a question for you, Mike. For a mail-in ballot, the additional, the additional cost of mail-in ballot, there's the postage, there is, there is the clerk cost or there's, there's the staff cost to actually do all the validation and make sure that the ballot is valid and can be put into the, to be counted pile. What additional... Yeah, well, that's hours.
Mike's salary.
Well, there's, well, Mike's, Mike's salary, but that takes his hours away from his other duties.
Yeah.
Or a clerk could be paid who's, or he could assign a clerk to it who works in his office. But in addition to those two, what are the other additional costs for processing mail ballots?
You know, off the top of my head, I can't really think about it. I mean, it's time consuming where we alter, alter all the ballots, restore them, you know, check them in, and then it's a matter of, you know, just taking them out of the vault during Election Day, and then the staff has to go through them when they have some time during Election Day. But then you have the tally later at the end of the night to count those. But one of the big problems that we had, and I don't know if we've seen this enough, what a lot of folks like to do is they, you know, they get their ballots, and then they don't mail it in, and then it's like a ballot that hasn't come in, and then they tend to bring in the ballot into the collection area, and you have to turn it away, and then it gets processed by me, and, you know, spend a lot of time doing that.
Yeah, and now you have the extra processing on a ballot that arrived on Election Day, and you don't have the extra time to process it.
Why would they want a mail-in ballot and then walk it in?
They can't do that, man, because there's not...
They cannot take the ballot out of the envelope or just go up to the ballot issue and ask it to be processed in the office.
Yep.
If we had a lot of that, that's why it's a real late night, and they're after it as well.
Yeah, and that's, and the system just doesn't support that. People who, and Kelly, I think that most of those people are people who forgot to mail their ballot in in time and are saying, well, I'll just hand-deliver it. How hard can it be? It's like, oh, well, Mike will tell you.
So you've got the cost of the ballots, which you're going to have to pay for anyway, but then how many envelopes do you use to mail the ballots? Because it goes out with a special envelope that they have to return it in, plus the envelope that it goes out in, is that why the costs for mailing were so high?
Oh, yeah, because you're basically triple wrapping, you have to reach for envelopes in there, it's close to a dollar. They're a lot every envelope, so, and then it's just the tracking thing. And what's different about this, you see, the state computer's allowed for this grip and you can add the stuff on to it, but now they're just sending like a spreadsheet for the local election, which that's just another aspect that makes it a little bit more difficult and time consuming, because it's not all kind of in the system. It's, it's something completely different with the local election, which throws me off. They hired some other outfit to contract this. It's, it's, it's a little foreign, so I'm not, I don't know what to expect, but I guess. So I guess on my end, I just, the reason I ask you folks to consider this is just because of the extra time and just a little bit, you know, it just seems like it's going to be a little bit more tedious based on the local elections opposed to the other one, because the way it's set up, it's just a little different.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I would hope that as people, as we go forward, people get used to the idea of mailing in their ballot and understanding that walking it in on Election Day is not something that can be done, and hopefully that, and that, and so hopefully people would get smarter. I find myself always hoping that and sometimes getting what I hope for.
So, in any case, no, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, was your position.
And then, Mike, for these, for the state, for the most recent, for the last November election, about how many voters did we have?
How many voters were in that?
How many people voted?
1481.
1481, okay, I missed that number.
That's not the local, that's the state.
No, that was state.
Yeah, no, that was my question.
That's what his question was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he said local. I'm sorry.
No, and, and then... So half of them opted for this.
Nearly half of them.
Yeah. And then convert, and then, and then the follow-on question is for a, for the May town election, local election, what's our, what's our, where would you put the over/under?
It's all over the place. I mean, I can tell you, it's a contested election. We see upwards of 700 or a little more.
I was going to say 750.
It's not a contest. I mean, it could be as low as 350 or 85, you know, I mean, it's kind of all over the place.
No, that's fair, but I mean, even with a contested election, we're looking at about half the voters versus compared to the November election.
I definitely agree with that. You're not going to see that kind of turnout for all... You're not going to see that kind of turnout for a local... Unless, you know, I mean, like in the previous case back in November, of course, over 1,200 people voted.
Yeah, but they were coming for the governor election and they just happened to pick up a local ballot.
Exactly. So that's what you're seeing there in town because people tend to participate in both elections.
Yeah. I mean, I know I rode Brad's coattails, but I don't think they're that long.
Word. Okay. So do I have a motion? And if so, what do I have?
Uh, let's see. I'm inclined to... I'm inclined to go with mail-in voting and not... I'm inclined to not make a motion because I think if we don't make a motion, it just we have mail-in voting.
So then if...
And...
So if we don't have a motion, then I guess we're done.
Thank you, Mike.
No, I mean, I'd be willing to revisit it if need be or if there's other data, but I mean, at this point, I don't...
Yeah.
Because half of the people are taking advantage of it is my problem with it.
Yeah. And Mike, the question is, it's a 45 days in advance, so when is the cutoff for the Select Board having this vote?
Well, the election's Monday first.
So you're up against your deadline pretty close.
Yeah, our next meeting will be after the deadline.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. Would we have the opportunity to revisit this at our next meeting?
Not without a special meeting. I don't believe that.
No, our next scheduled meeting doesn't cover it. So this is... It's like this is our last scheduled chance to consider it.
I think so.
Now, did I give you a figure of how many people participated in the general election for mail-in vote?
You did.
Yeah.
What figure was that? I know I gave you a monetary figure.
So you gave us that of the returned ballots, there were 630 against that 1,481, so 40% of the voters voted by mail.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Actually...
It was a lot of work.
I don't know if you count weekends, but 45 days is the day after your next meeting.
Oh, okay.
If you... If weekends count.
Yeah.
And Mike, if weekends count, actually 45 days is the day after our next meeting. So I guess we could reconsider it at that point because I don't think it's working days. I think it's calendar days.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think... And by making the decision, I think we're committing ourselves to financially supporting Mike's office to make sure this all happens.
Right. So... But most of that funding that he needs has nothing to do with the mail-in voting. I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
There may be an incremental cost on top of what he's already asked for to support mail-in voting, but the request that he has on the street right now, he needs them... He needs a pretty sizable chunk of money anyway if he needs an extra $300 to mail the local municipal votes. You know, it's a 10% surcharge for 40% participation. I'll take it.
Yep. I see it the same way.
Yeah, I don't think the next 10, 30 years is going to break the bank, but well, actually it will because you're going to...
It will. We're already in the red.
I'll pay for it to avoid 300 people calling me complaining.
All right. Great.
It's beautiful in theory, but any money you get would have to go into general fund and I don't want to deal with it.
Whatever comes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, going to move on to the next topic then. Highway Department is requesting the permission to deficit spend snow and ice if needed. They currently have about $19,000 in each and we have snow coming on Friday. So can I... Do we want to...
So we'll have to do this again at the next meeting.
Well, if you vote to approve deficit spending, it should be a blank vote that allows them to deficit spend until winter's over.
That's required.
Yeah, it is required.
And we have $36,000... About $37,000 between the two accounts and if my recollection is, we budgeted between $75,000 and $80,000 total between those two accounts.
32 for each account, so 64.
Six... Okay. That doesn't match my memory, but I don't have the numbers in front of me.
But you have it in your budget. It's in your packet.
Okay. But that's...
I'm pretty sure it was 32.
That would be a reduction overpass because in the past, it was $75,000 combined at one point.
Maybe it's 35 of these or...
But it...
42.5, no. What would that be?
Yeah, it's not. It's in the 30s.
37.5 each probably? That gets you to 75.
From a 420s.
Um, it's 70... Combined, $75,000 it looks like. Plus 75 and a little more.
Yeah.
45 in expenses and 30 in wages.
There you go.
It used to be a combined number and it was $75,000 and then we split it out because the account Lori wanted a separate wages and expenses account.
Oh, I see.
And so we took $75,000 and we split it and then the wages has been getting bumped up to reflect the general wages going up.
Okay. Yep.
And so I know we couldn't... I know you can't reduce it because if you reduce your snow and ice expenditure or your proportion...
No, you can increase it by a certain percentage over what the prior average of certain number of years.
Oh, you can? I always thought if you reduced it, you couldn't deficit spend.
No, I'm saying you can increase it over... Like you use the average of so many years back and you can increase it a certain percentage. You can't exceed that percentage. I don't think you can decrease it.
Okay, that was my understanding also.
You cannot give any... You don't have to budget any snow and ice. You can just raise it on the recap, which is not transparent and not recommended, but...
Yeah, I don't like that idea anyway.
No, not at all.
So I guess my question is, it's March 2nd and we've got... Let's see, since the request, we had the storm on Tuesday and we've got another storm coming and the thought is they're getting close to deficit spending with those two storms?
They said they would be out of money after the storm we just had is what I thought they said.
Either way, they're going to be out of it after.
It's going to be close.
But it's close enough that if you're... It's wise to give them permission to continue to work based on the number of storms.
Yeah, and the weather's been saving it. Saving it for us.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion if I'm doing it correctly. I make a motion to allow the Highway... I give the Highway Department permission to deficit spend snow and ice account if needed.
I'll second for discussion. I just want to see where they're...
Okay, second.
Yeah.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I want... I just want to see what we have for... Lori just put out another expenditure report.
Hmm, today. Yep.
And I want to know...
It does not include any bills submitted from last storm though, because those would be on the warrant that's coming up and is not posted. It would be in this week's bills and not posted yet.
Right. So it'd be effective as of one or two weeks ago?
I'm sorry, what?
It'd be as effective two weeks ago.
Effective two weeks ago. It would reflect all bills submitted as of two weeks ago. Because that's when...
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right. Honestly, I don't think it's going to make that big a difference if we approve it now. If they go over, they go over. If they don't, they don't.
Yep.
So...
Yep. So...
Right.
All right. So I've got a motion, a second, and it sounds like discussion is over. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's... And I guess the next thing to take up is the budget review.
I'm not even going to try to look at that.
It's tiny, isn't it?
Yes.
Reading glasses make it clear as crystal clear. I put them on the end of my nose. So just on a high level, I was at the Department Head meeting today. I just want to kind of review what I covered with them. You know, we collectively... When I say we collectively, it was the Select Board and the advisory at one point had made a statement, "Hey, we'll typically match the federal COLA," right, as a starting point for where raises are. However, I don't think at that time, given like the 10-year trend prior to that, you were looking at between like 1.2 and maybe 2.8% being federal COLA in any one of those years.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think anyone foresaw an 8.9% COLA hitting, you know, virtually overnight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And most of the reasoning or rationale behind making the statement that we would do the COLA that way had to do with the fact that Brookfield, by choosing to be different in many years and doing like zero or one or one and a half percent raises, had gotten wage non-competitive for municipal jobs to the point that when we did the Collins Center review, that we were like well behind our near-peer communities relative to the compensation we were offering our employees. But we did go through the process and rectify that a couple of years back. And when we're... And the discussion that I had today is that really by having done that adjustment, what's a better indicator than the federal COLA is really what our local and near-peer communities are doing.
This is just the federal COLA history that's on the federal website.
So if you take out the...
Recession.
Recession in the 80s, in most instances, you're talking something that's between 1.5 and 3%, right? When you look at it from a spending perspective, right, proposition, you know, from an overall budget perspective, you know, in my opinion, kind of the starting point we should talk about. And one of the things they asked for is like, one of the things they'd like to see is some level of predictability of at least what our target is in terms of our budget cycle and our wages, right? So, you know, and I think, I don't know, we don't have a written... We don't have a written budget process.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, right. And I think this may be an opportunity and it's too late for this year, but I think we've... You defined the process informally this year and I think there's some policy decisions that we need to talk about for future years where maybe we say for the next three years, when the Department Heads submit their budget, submit 2.5% as your raises, submit 3% as your raises, right? Pick a number that's reasonable that we think, you know, at least has a snowballs' chance in Hades of fitting in with the funds that come from the state, the revenues that we're projecting, what have you, with the understanding, hey, the policy or guidance is submitted at this level. Depending on what the financials are and depending at what a market survey, you know, a locally-held market survey relative to our positions and like what raises other towns are giving, gives, we reserve the right to adjust it from that, hey, this is what you submit on an annual basis number, Department Heads.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
So I think what they were asking is not for you to tell them what to... Not for the Board to tell them what to request. I think what they were asking for is some predictability on what the Board is going to recommend.
Right.
And they said, "So if you can tell us that for the next three years, you're going to say 3% and we can count on that for three years, we're okay with that."
Yeah.
As opposed to saying you're going to use this scale or that scale because it's been hodgepodge in the past. I think what they're looking for is... And they will submit what they're told is like, okay, so we're going to look... We're projecting out this and we're going to look at 3% every year for the next three years and so that's something they can count on, they can work on and they can figure out their budget using that.
I think we have to be careful though because we can't necessarily guarantee it because things happen. I mean, who knows?
Understood.
Right.
Understood. But I think that's what they were saying. I'm just...
No.
That was my understanding when we were done talking.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I'm just saying...
Oh, yeah, I don't...
I mean, one of the things we have to be careful of is that it's not a, you know, it's not a guarantee, it's guidance, right? And it's not a guarantee, it's a target, right?
If I was to set a target today, I'd say 3.
Yeah. I mean, that's what most companies do.
That's what I do for everything, right.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's what most companies do. I mean, generally when you look at a lot of like the bigger organizations and I know everyone tells me municipal's not the same as corporate, I get it, but it's a planning factor, right?
So I think when the Board voted or took the action to follow the federal COLA, it was as a guideline or a suggestion, not, you know, we will do this.
Right.
And I think you're doing kind of the same thing, but with...
A set number.
Setting a number.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good approach as opposed to saying, okay, when you submit your budget, submit it with no COLA and we'll let you know what it will be.
Right.
That's give people right in front.
Yeah.
It does.
So I think that's a good approach. I have two questions. The school budget. So what's the school COLA?
We only have the elementary school and their entire budget increase is 7.5%.
All right, but we don't know what the COLA is for...
What do they use for budgeting?
We would need it... We'd have to go look at their contract.
Okay. So the school and the police, that was just my question. What... How do they compare to, you know? Okay.
But the police isn't a straight COLA. They're also a step in grade. So that...
Yes.
We can't compare that either because it's... So I can give you... And we don't know what the overall increase will be because this is a negotiation year and we don't know what FY '24's salaries will look like for them.
Okay.
So...
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak.
Go for it. Through me. Go ahead, through me.
You stated that the town gets zero to 1.5%. This town, over the years, has given more than other towns. Last year, they get almost 5%. And then all the other years, they've got very good COLAs, more than the other towns.
In the last six years...
They've gotten very good increases in their COLAs. And then you had the Collins dump on top of that, which referred to towns from Parry to Brookfield, those other towns that didn't compare to us. You went out east, but it pays a lot different out there. So COLAs in this town have been very, very good for the town and the local employees.
So I'm not going to debate...
You can just look in the back.
So, Mr. Holkra, I'm not going to debate this again because it was decided at town meeting.
Right.
Okay? What we're talking about is the method that we're going to use going forward based off of where we are today. I can tell you if we did a wage survey today, we are on par with local communities relative to our pay scales.
Yeah, you said 8.7 or 8.9?
Well, not with 8.9, but I'm...[1627.82] but what, I'm, and I'm not even, I don't know if you've been listening.
Oh, I haven't.
But we, okay, eight point nine is off the table, okay, right?
I understand that.
Okay, so, so let's be clear, we're all starting from a what's reasonable and rational and fair to both the townspeople and the town employees. Right? That's where, what we're trying to get to.
Oh yeah, I get that, I get that.
All right.
But you made a statement stating that, you know, we're way behind zero type of town.
We, we, well, I can tell you, in the, in the, in the years prior, and I can tell, I can tell you when I looked back, when I did a five-year look back, when I first went on advisory back, I can't even remember what year it was, there were several years that were one
Oh fourteen, oh fifteen.
Yeah, there were several years where that was the case, right? And we got very far behind, those were years when other towns were giving COLAs, and we did get behind, and that compounds itself, right? You have a run of years where there's zero, and you lose that compounding of those years that are zero or one percent, and, and that's what caused the need for the adjustment. And, and I know you can debate the methodology that was used with Collins, but if you look today of the wages in most of our primary positions, they are certainly not out of, there's not an order of magnitude difference between what we pay somebody who's the, you know, the town clerk here to what somebody who's, you know, in a bunch of our neighboring communities. Okay? So.
I'd like to see the year that we gave up, so half a percent or one percent. I'd like to see what year that was.
I'll go back and find it if you want. It was, it was, it was on the look back on the original spreadsheet that I picked up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about what makes sense for Brookfield.
I know we're talking about the data statement, though, and that's what I was commenting on, your statement, not how you're going to go about giving future COLAs.
Yeah, but there was a period of time when this town didn't give raises for a fairly significant period of time, and, and that's what generated the need for that adjustment.
Yeah.
Okay? So, anyway.
So are you looking for a motion to what we suggest for the COLA?
I don't think I'm there yet in terms of, well, first of all, if you want to make a motion relative to that, I'm okay with it. I know that Kelly was doing some, some research, I didn't know if we were at the point where we had any recommendations, or you wanted to share what we've been looking at.
I can share what, what I have for data from people who responded, and then I added the information that Marty had presented.
Yeah.
I have a question, so we target a COLA. COLA is for both expenses and
No, no, just for salaries.
For salary wages.
Yeah.
So if people were to get behind in salary wages, and we discovered that, that can always just be
Address the following year.
The following year.
Yep, potentially, yes.
Right.
Yep, yeah.
So it'd be prudent to at least figure out a number to make it easier for people to budget with. Because if we do fall behind, we can correct that.
Yep.
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
So, did you want to start, is this, is that this sheet, or is that?
That's the one that I had done last, last week, the last meeting, and then I added the towns that Marty had asked us to use to compare.
Okay.
Several of the towns don't have a COLA chosen yet.
Okay.
So like Berry, Belcher Town, Lester, they don't, they haven't chosen a COLA. But what I'm seeing in the spreadsheet from the towns that did reply is that they range from six percent to two percent is the lowest. The two percent ones have some type of caveat with them, most of them, that they're, they're, because step in grade is also included. So that's on top of step in grade. They're running average about three to three and a half percent across the board, and, and I have towns in here that are, and like I said, these are the towns that responded to my inquiry. I didn't cherry pick which ones, and if they were comps, this can all be sorted based on the size of the budget, the size of the tax base, you can sort it every which way to Sunday. I did add in the percentage of receipts for each town to show why some may be
Higher than others.
I don't know if it's part of them, but out of curiosity, what does the state use for state?
So the state uses the state COLA.
And what's that figure?
I don't know because it was never discussed, and so I didn't take the time to look it up. I have no idea what the state COLA is this year. But in order to make the, to see the towns, so you can pick which ones are actually comps in this list, you want to look at the raise in appropriate versus the total budget, and that'll tell you what isn't being covered by money coming in from somewhere else. And then you look at the overall tax base, so if the tax base, so for Brookfield, the total tax base is three hundred and eighty million dollars in value. We don't want to compare ourselves to Belcher Town, which is one of the ones that Marty put up, their total tax base is one billion, nine hundred and seventy-five million dollars.
Belcher Town?
Yes, that's their tax base, yes. Lester, another one, one billion, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Yes, our, our taxes are higher than those towns because those towns have a much broader tax base
They have massive taxes.
than we do, and it's not a small jump between the two. There were a couple that are comparable, like East Brookfield and Hardwick. Let's see, who else did he put in there? Hubbardston, twice the size. Holland is looking at a potential five percent increase, although I don't think they're going to do it, they're meeting tonight and discussing it, and their tax basis is within, you know, a hundred million of ours, so it's not that far off. North Brookfield, a third bigger than us. Spencer, one billion, five hundred thousand dollars. You don't see those, Tom, because I just added them to my spreadsheet. I can make a photocopy of this if you'd like.
Yeah, let's make a copy of that, give it to me.
See if you can get it on the big paper. Do the eleven by seventeen, that drawer should be full.
And this is in the one that you sent out at like five o'clock, right?
It is actually, in the one that I sent out at like five o'clock today.
That's why I'm sitting here on my phone, I am actually listening to you.
Yeah, because this is all in there, you can look at the, the bottom drawer is the big drawer, I think, the big paper.
Kelly, what was North Brookfield?
I can't tell you because I don't have the paper.
Three percent, three percent is North Brookfield.
Yeah.
So, so North Brookfield was three percent, they have about twice the tax base that we do.
I was referring to, Marty brought in a list of towns that have lower tax bills than us
Yes.
that are close in geography to us, but they are not apples to apples.
Apples, yeah.
And, and if you want to compare tax bills, you've got to go apples to apples. I mean, you look at Tisberry, which is on the list in, that's in your email, right? Or, yeah, Tisberry?
Yep.
Tisberry on the Vineyard?
Yes. Their tax, their tax rate was set today for FY23. It was set today. Their tax rate is two dollars and change.
Mm-hmm.
Their tax base is, is like a hundred billion dollars. I mean, that's an exaggeration, but Karen will be able to tell us in a moment.
To my mind, the appropriate comparative is the average or median single-family tax bill.
Absolutely not.
Why not?
Because the outlying factors of the commercial, industrial, and personal property change the percentage
Huge, huge impact.
that you're going to pay in your taxes.
You mean, change the percentage that the residential base covers?
Yes, right.
Yes.
Because, because if you have, if you have a SIP, which is the acronym for the commercial, industrial, personal property, because it takes a lot less time, say, if you have a CIP that is covering seventy percent of your raise in appropriate
Mm-hmm.
your tax bill is going to be only thirty percent of that, whereas our tax rate is, our, our raise in appropriate is seventy-four percent because we are mostly residential.
Mm-hmm.
So you have to compare towns with the same demographics. It doesn't have to do with the average residential tax value, or single-family home value, or the single-family home income, or the single-family home, it, total, it has to do with the percentage of that total to the entire amount raised in appropriated. Isn't that printing?
No.
So a couple of years ago, when I was looking at comparison of Brookfield to other towns, the town that I found that is the closest in population size, demographics, and finances was Millville.
Yep.
Yeah. Is Millville, I think, is, is Millville in the list?
They're not in the list.
It's not in Worcester County, but certainly
It doesn't have to be in Worcester County.
It's certainly closer than Tisbury.
Yeah, yeah, it's
I was just saying, Tisbury is one of the towns that responded.
Millville is one of the closest, closest ones to us, profound.
Same deal with a hundred people of the population and it, look at the
And again, population is not necessarily relevant.
Right.
Because you may have a, a certain size of tax base, and, and it's the same size tax base that Brookfield has, but it's all apartment houses, so their population is three times the size of ours, their taxes are exactly the same. Because it's the tax base that you need to look at.
We have a sister, you're going to have to put two pieces together because one of my son came, they added the paperwork, it's only a half day to get.
With any half, so. And, and some of the towns are doing, and when, and as you can see even on the old one, some of the towns are doing a hybrid where they did like two percent plus a certain hourly rate.
For their hybrid COLA, not just a
Yeah, not just a straight percentage, little more complicated, and what it does is it allows for that people in lower income brackets are more hit by cost of living changes because more of their income is the things that go into that index. So, you know, there's some question of how we would want to handle that, or we just go with what we've always done, which is a straight percentage COLA. So.
While they figure that out.
What's that?
I was going to say, while they figure that out, I'll be right back.
Yep. So this is the elementary school budget?
Yes.
And did, did we get a representative there? Did you get to the meeting?
No.
Okay. Looks like we've got a lot of kids going out of, out of town with special needs.
How do kids, it's not playing nicely at all, so. We're going to have to worry about this later because this is not working.
And it, and it looks like, I mean, we can't see it from a standard like, like COLA perspective, but in going through the school budget, the school budget looks, they went up in, in terms of total cost of salaries, which could include like a headcount change as well, they went up three point one eight percent. And it looks like a lot of their budget drivers looks like fuel and electricity, so it was like the fixed costs that were driving a lot of, and there's a significant increase in like transportation for students going out of Brookfield Elementary, as well as a very significant increase in special needs tuition. So that means we've got kids going out of, out of town because we can't provide the services that are required to support them fundamentally.
Can I tell Mr. Holbrauf? He asked me about North Brookfield.
Sure.
They're offering a three percent increase, and their tax base is roughly two hundred million more than ours.
Right.
So, about thirty more than ours, right?
Yeah, yep. And then, you know, so a lot of the dri, a lot of the, the cost drivers in the school to get them to the seven percent wasn't necessarily wages, it's, it's other costs, like, you know, even, I'd say that really those big drivers are foundationally, the special, special needs costs, and then utilities, more than anything else.
Well, I'm looking at their total administration budget, went down from FY23 to FY24.
Yeah, a small, a small amount.
A lot of people retire.
A small amount, but it did go down, yeah.
Yeah.
Although those retirees are going to hit us in a different way.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, that's, that's the piece is, is that, I mean, so if you're looking at the school in terms though of, of like salary expense, it's fundamentally three point two is, is what we're seeing, and that might be from shifts in positions, so.
What is the percentage increase of the elementary school budget?
Seven point eight, seven point two eight percent total.
Okay.
Most of it driven by fixed expenses versus salaries.
Salaries.
Yeah, and a lot of it driven by like special needs, students going out of, going out of district, or going out of at least our school.
Things that we don't have as much control over as some other things.
Very little control over. So, yeah, so it's not that somebody went to the till and said, we need to have these, you know.
And the special needs at our school, I think, is very good.
Yeah.
So if they're getting sent out, there's a reason they'd be in.
Yeah, yeah, we historically have not sent kids out.
Right.
We've done a very good job of staffing it so that, with folks and the skill set and the services in order to provide those services in-house, so if we're doing it, it's because we need to do it. Okay, so Brad, it sounded like you were considering a motion to, to at least target three percent.
Unless someone can tell me otherwise, I would make a motion to target three percent.
Was that a motion?
That sounds like a motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so that's what we're going to try to set it at.
I'll pop that into the spreadsheet and run it.
Okay. Then, and I guess from a standpoint of, I know that it sounded like the, the revenue outlook is pretty tight right now.
Right now, but only because we don't have any numbers. I mean, we have no idea what new growth is going to be. I know that our, our receipts are down from prior year.
Fees are down, but she said receipts weren't down.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Fees are down, which, which is part of money that we receive, so, but it's spring, and, and that could pick up because a lot of the fees are building permits, they generate a lot of money.
Yeah.
So that could pick up again. We have traditionally underestimated our receipts by between ten and twelve percent every year. So if we conservatively guess that we're going to get a three percent increase, or a five percent increase, we've used three because I asked Lori to give me a guess, and she said she wouldn't feel more, she wouldn't feel comfortable assuming more than three percent increase from last year at this point. We're right at, right at the cap, at the levy limit. I think we have like sixty-eight thousand dollars in excess levy, if we did the budget exactly the way it was requested.
Right, but that includes
Which is, that includes the sizable stipends.
Most of the wages, yeah.
And, and there are a few really big shifts in the budget that are not necessarily driven by pay.
So, so let's talk those so that we're all aware of them equally.
Yeah.
Unless you wanted to cover something else first.
Just from my experience, rather than talking about how much the levy limit changes, I would like to understand how much the raise in appropriate is increasing compared to fiscal year 23. I've found that is the most effective lens to which to measure this. Because I found that if I, if I look at it from a levy limit, then things can happen.
If I can, if I can get into this from my phone, I will tell you exactly how it's going to affect it. But again, the raise in appropriate is, is heavily influenced by how much money we get from the fed, the state.
True.
And from the estimated receipts from the town for page three on the recap.
But doesn't that also impact the levy limit headroom?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So they're, both numbers are vulnerable to the same variables.
Well, while she's trying to get into her phone to do what she's trying to do, let me actually cover a couple of other things that we talked about at the department head meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, this is a lesson learned, I'd like to continue to hone department head meetings on the same day as when we've got a select wins meeting, so that we can actually have these conversations while
Well, now that you meet on Thursdays, they're the last Thursday of every month, so.
So, but it's the last Thursday, and I think we do first and third, so maybe we need to pull it up into the third one, that way it's fresh, the same day.
Okay, well, there's, there's other glitches with that, but I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I don't think it matters to anybody except for the accountant who would like to attend, and, and she's only here every other month on those times.
Oh, got it, okay.
So she wants us to change the way we do the department head meetings so that she can be at all of them, which means they would change every month based on her schedule. And I was like, nah, I don't think so.
Anyway, so one of the other things we talked about is that, or the ta, the vacation time that we offer and the amount and when people get it is archaic and difficult to, to bring in talent because you don't, you get seven days, the first July first that you're employed, which means you can go upwards of eleven months before you have a single earned vacation day.
Mm-hmm, I can see a problem with that.
Then you start earning, then you start earning that July first, so you really don't have any days until sometime thereafter.
Yeah, don't you normally earn so much vacation for every week you work?
No, that's sick time.
That's how other places work.
That's how other places work.
If you're getting, if you're getting PTO, so PTO is paid time off, you can use for whatever you want, whenever you want, for whatever reason you want, right?
Yeah.
Vacation time is vacation time and you earn sick time at a certain rate per month, but if you want to switch it over to PTO, nobody gets vacation. You earn like a day and a quarter or half a day up to a certain cap. That's definitely something that's doable.
Yeah, so we don't have to decide it tonight, right? But that's a discussion that we should have prior to town meeting because I think that is, I think the vacation portion is actually written into the bylaw, so.
It is.
It would require a bylaw change.
Yeah, we should look into.
But I think we need to look into starting at the equivalent of two weeks and having it, you know, and actually though, depending on how you write it, you can make it look more like PTO where you get a certain amount earned. And that way you're not giving people like necessarily like two weeks upfront and then, you know, hypothetically, someone could come in, take their vacation and just be gone, right? We can take a look at what the structure looks like, right? But, you know, where it's two weeks, where do they start getting additional weeks, that sort of thing, is something that we need to consider from a standpoint of like total package and keeping, getting and retaining employees.
Yeah, it definitely seems onerous. The way you described the current system seems very onerous and stingy.
And is it every year? Is that how that works? It's not until the end of the year then you get your PTO?
It's weird, I don't even know.
So.
I'm going to get it wrong if I try to explain it.
Vacation time accrues as of July 1st.
And it's.
If you start working in November, you work until July 1st and then you get your anniversary date November 1st. You don't get anything accrued until the following July 1st, so you've effectively worked a year and a half without any vacation time. No sick time, or you can earn sick time, but you can't take it.
But you don't earn until that fiscal year the PTO?
Yeah.
So, what I did with the, we had two employees that started mid-year. On their anniversary date, we prorated it from the date of their anniversary to the end of the fiscal year and then on that fiscal year, it started, they got the full amount so that they would have, now they're on the same calendar as everybody else. It seemed like the fair thing to do and when I didn't have any selectmen, so.
I think we would have voted for that one.
I think you would have too.
So, but anyway, either one of those boards would have supported that, so.
Is this something that the personnel board should be looking into or do we really have one at the moment?
We have a personnel board. We've had an active personnel board the entire time.
Okay.
The thing that is not, maybe not Office 365. My phone's not playing nicely. The personnel board's mandate is to review things and then bring it to the select board. So if you want them to do the legwork, that's me, Holly, Amy, Doug Ford and Linda Lincoln.
Typically, we ask them to go look at it and please bring it back to us on what your recommendation is.
That's what I was thinking was asking them to, exactly, to do the legwork. Because it definitely sounds like something that we need to consider.
All right, then the other thing that got put forth and I didn't write down notes, so if I miss any other critical ones, let me know, is the, there was a request to at least consider starting to shift more of the healthcare cost to the town, and the insurance cost to the town versus the employee because the surrounding communities on the whole are, cover a significantly higher percentage of the healthcare premiums than Brookfield does. So we're at 60-40.
The town covers 60.
The employee covers 40. There are communities around us that are 80-20, 75-25. And that's one of those shifts that, I mean, I couldn't with good conscience recommend it in a year, but it might be something that we might want to consider a phase in plan to start to catch up, so.
I can't get, my phone is not playing nicely. It's saying we cannot open all of Outlook and access everything from here because it just won't let me do it.
Okay, what were you trying to get to?
I was trying to get to my recap simulator so I could tell Tom what the numbers are and how it's going to, how it's going to affect the.
If you could send that to me in an email, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, I can do that. I'll send you the whole recap simulator, then you can plug in whatever numbers you want and you can play with it and see how the whole thing interacts and feeds into it. It's got the levy limit, it's got the LA 5, it's got the LA 13, the whole, it's just like the whole DLIS website in a game version, a gaming version.
I built something similar for the advisory committee last year.
So, so that said, was there anything else that we covered with them relative specifically?
No, they wanted, they wanted some continuity in the percentage increase so they can plan appropriately. They, and I think this is a trust thing for them at this point as well.
Right.
And they wanted, they wanted us to look at the insurance shifting.
Yeah.
They wanted us to also look at a plus one option for.
For the insurance.
For medical insurance as opposed to family or single. Because that is, again, there aren't a lot of people who have the family plan, so it would be beneficial to a lot of the employees, although it would shift the burden upward on the families.
Those who stay on the family plan would take a hit.
Yeah.
But the argument there is that the people who don't have families are paying for those families. So it works both ways, right? So, that won't affect everybody evenly, but it will assist our seniors because if we shift the burden of what we pay toward the town more, then it lessens the burden for the, for the insurance, the health insurance on the seniors that are part of the system still. Because there, we still cover theirs. So it helps a broader spectrum of residents, not just the town hall itself.
Kelly, what's the percentage, 60-40?
Correct.
Who's paying 60% on?
Yes.
They're paying 40?
Yes.
It's pretty good for that.
It's actually, it's extremely expensive. It's over $800 a month. That's a lot of money.
Everyone's paying it.
But, and again, the neighboring towns are paying a larger, a larger share than what Brookfield is paying and that's something that they brought to our attention.
Other towns are paying higher than that.
Correct, yeah.
Town employees?
No, the town themselves are paying 75%.
They're paying like 80-20.
80-20 or 75-25. So it's a really big difference and it's, the insurance here is expensive to begin with, so it's a heavy burden on our seniors who are paying this. I mean, not just the residents, not just the employees, but it's, so the insurance is supposed to go up roughly 7 and 1/2 percent or more. Our liability insurance is going up roughly 10%. Our health insurance is going up 7 and 1/2 percent or maybe more, maybe 7.8. I'm meeting with them next week, so I'll know that number's solid next week. But they estimated 10% on the general liability because we had big claims over the last year. So these are things that we can't actually control at this point, although I am trying to mitigate the damage by implementing a roof. So our problems have come from roofs and we have another roof that's a problem. And so a roof inspection, maintenance and replacement schedule. And actually Brad is helping by taking his drone and taking shots, photos of all the roofs so that we have an actual record of what they look like. So we can go up next year and say, "All right, this is where a problem was. Has it deteriorated further? Do we see any other problems? Okay, I'm seeing water damage, I'm seeing potential for water damage up on the roof by the windows where they meet the."
Yeah, just the sat, like for instance, just the sashes of the windows up here, the paint's all gone and it's now beginning to.
Yeah, it's spongy looking. It's spongy looking. So I saw that, I saw some broken slate, I saw that there is, and I have to look up and see how slate actually degrades. I don't know if slate actually does degrade, I think it just breaks. But there are marks on the roof showing where there's constant water that are not in other areas of the roof, so I want to know why. But, so this program will allow us to inspect the roofs and make sure that they're properly repaired, immediately repaired and replaced in a timely fashion. So we can budget for that with free cash and say, "Hey, this is going in the roof bucket."
Well, I'd be interested in looking at the other buildings after walking downstairs with Don yesterday at the foundations in the pylons because these need to be repointed or we're going to start losing the floor.
The pylons need to be repointed or we're going to lose the floor?
They're beginning to crumble.
Okay, the last time that I dealt with the spalling in the pylons, we actually had to lift the town hall and replace the pylon, but it didn't affect the floor at all, so you lost me on the floor thing.
I'm just saying if it's not addressed, like catching it early enough will avoid.
Needing to replace, yeah, that would be, well, the whole building had listed the last town hall.
It looked like it was heaving over, which I think is why that's heaved up.
Yeah, so that's another good thing that we, so if we're cognizant.
I mean, that's just what we saw here, what's going on, is anyone ever, I don't even, is there a basement in the library? I have no idea.
As long as we're cognizant of these things, this will help reduce our liability.
It's free to look.
Our cyber insurance is, they're requiring a lot of major end-user biometrics and I have a big, long email from Jacob I'll forward to you that explains all the different things and the insurance is requiring these things. That's one of the reasons that the tech budget is a little higher than, sorry. Shh. I have it on silent, but apparently the alarm doesn't care. The tech budget is bouncing up because it's being required for the cyber insurance. And so that's another one of those control things.
Yeah, I thought the tech budget was pretty minimal.
It actually is, over the grand scheme of things, the tech budget is not much at all. And you should actually have a printout of it in your packet, I think. It's definitely in the spreadsheet I sent you. You've got the electric, the electricity, where everything's compiled and what makes the big number in the budget.
They have this.
Okay, good, all right. Those are all the different softwares that we use for the finances and for maintaining, you know, the email and the website, and the email and the website are actually some of the cheaper ones. And then the funding for, and every includes all of the upgrades that are required by the insurance, the labor and the server and the bits and pieces that go with it. But I will forward you Jacob's email so that, it's a very articulate explanation of what we're doing with IT.
Okay, so I don't want to cut the discussion short on this, but do we want to hold off on further budget discussions until we go ahead and recalculate based off of what we're planning on for the wages?
Yep.
Unless there were other questions that you all had tonight that you wanted to go over? And I think the one other thing I'd like to cover tonight relative to the budget is I'd like to go ahead and let's go through and make a selection as to who's going to be the POC for which departments for, basically like department liaison to handle like the budget discussions. So I think that's the other thing I'd like to cover tonight relative to the budget if that's acceptable.
I don't see why it wouldn't be.
Okay. So, I mean, general government, that's us. I don't think we need a liaison for that, do we?
I don't think so.
Okay. Likewise with all the stuff.
I mean, I talk to myself all the time, so.
There you go. That's only when you need an expert opinion, Kelly. All right, so I'd say everything down to, so who wants to liaise with the town accountant?
So are we picking people to liaise with these departments because we're questioning their budget?
No.
Or do you just want to talk to the ones who you have questions for the budget?
We could just talk to the ones that we have questions.
Because the outsourced budget is a contract.
Right, I was going to say that's outsourcing contract.
It's the audit, which is the fee is what the fee is.
Right.
And her expense account is level funded.
Yep.
Do you want to?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so.
Advisory is level funded.
Assessors, is there any questions there?
Their board is asking for a larger stipend. Their wages are what they are. The consulting fee is level funded and so is the expenses. So the only, you know, we're going to take care of what we're going to, the 3% for the other two items, otherwise it's not, it's just the.
Right, so they were asking, they were asking for a 20% increase.
So do you want to speak with the Board of Assessors? Are you going to increase all of the stipends across the board? Are you just going, you're going to recommend they're level funded? Are you going to just recommend what the department asked for? Because Board of Health is the other department that's asking for more money and zoning. I think those are the only ones that have asked for an increase.
Board of Health is asking for it probably because they're now paying.
No, Board of Health is asking for it because they're going to have more meetings. That's what they said, was it's the stipend for the board. Their budget is one that we need to talk to them about. That's a budget that needs some discussing because they're asking for things.
How did Board of Health's salary wind up such an odd number, 38, 39?
Probably through COLAs.
Let me see where the.
Yeah, but we haven't done, applied COLAs to Board of Health salaries typically.
Is the salary the stipend or?
Yes.
To the board, okay.
That's the stipend for the board. That's what they're asking for.
Is there a difference between calling it a salary and calling it a stipend?
Yes, because a salary is paid for hours worked, the time put in. A stipend is because, hey, thanks for showing up.
Okay.
It doesn't matter if you have no meetings or if you have 100 meetings, you're getting a thank you, basically. It's not a wage, it's not something meant to be a wage.
Okay.
Board of Health is where?
Down in the. They're on page three. This is so small.
Yeah, so it says Board of Health salary, but it is actually just a stipend and that is they want to increase the number of their meetings. And I don't know how they pay themselves for that. They asked for 6,400 for their Board of Health clerk, which has been put into the all-board clerk salary, which is why I have a zero in the recommendation line, because it's part of her salary because she's doing the job. She's already been, it's already been placed in her lap, so that was added to the hours of the all-board's clerk, which is what it was originally intended to do in the first place. They didn't want to lose Brianna and Brianna wound up leaving for a better job, so. But they are asking for a community health program for $950, but that's part of a contract that we're in that doesn't cost us any money. And if you look at that amount, it's almost, it's much higher than what we were paying when we were paying for it.
Yeah, I remember this did go into that contract with Lester.
Yes, it did.
That's being provided.
Yes, it did.
And so what are they, what are they intending to do additional with the money they're asking?
They're not.
Okay.
That's why we need to talk to them. Because this is the very first time that they've put this budget together and they were, they were very iffy on what they should and shouldn't include in the budget.
Because Mike put it together before.
Correct. Correct. There is a health agent in here for $1,000, which if you look at that, that's $300 more than we paid when we had a health agent, and that's also part of the IMA with Lester.
Okay.
And, and they have, the IMA has three health agents, so it's not like we're going to be short a health agent.
Who would like to go speak with the Board of Health?
I'll talk to him.
Tom's got Board of Health. All right.
And again, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's just because they weren't really clear on how to do this. Their, their Board of Health expenses, I don't know what they're basing that increase on. I don't. The transfer station, they have hazardous waste day with North Brookfield, which is an additional $5,000, but this is not a new program, they've done it in the past.
Oh, no, we haven't done it in years.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think we've done.
That's not what North Brookfield told me.
Years since we've participated.
Okay. So I didn't know if that was in their expense budget already, and then they dumped another $5,000.
It's got to have been five or six years.
But the contract doesn't say how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, I go to North Brookfield, because I got property in North Brookfield and, yeah, I know that Brookfield doesn't participate with, or hasn't participated with them.
For years.
But there's, we don't know what the cost is, so I don't know if that's going to go up or down. So that's something that needs to be spoken with them about. And their transfer station expenses, that is, I don't know if they just took a percentage and went up on everything, or how they, how they did the math, so that's something that needs to be discussed with them as well. So transfer station is also Board of Health.
So, so when's their next meeting? Because Tom probably needs to get on their agenda or else just talk to their chair?
You have to ask their clerk or go on the My Town Government, I don't keep track of the Board of Health meetings.
I, no, it was more of a question, is that one, if he, if he's wanting to talk about it, do they need to put it on their agenda?
If he wants to talk to the whole board, yes.
Okay.
If he wants to talk to, to just the chairman and that, you know, and have that conversation, but the board is the one who actually should be voting the budget.
Yes.
And Maureen has been very good about make, going to the board and having the board walk through all of what, what's going on.
Yeah.
The library has some massive increases, which I, I know Brenda's got explanations for, but you may want to speak with the trustees.
Good. Do you want that one or do you want me to take it?
I can, I can take that.
I know part of the increase is they created a new job of assistant library director, and that came with a substantial salary and a contract, which this board is supposed to sign, because the trustees hire the director. The director hires the staff, but I don't believe the director has the authority to enter, to bind the town in a contract.
Should I meet with library or trustees?
I would, I would ask to meet with the trustees and Brenda, all of them together. I mean, the trustees' meetings have Brenda there all the time, so just.
They do.
Go to one of their meetings and say, hey, you know, this is.
And let them know that's what you want to.
Yeah, we just, I just want, I just have some questions about the budget, can you explain?
Yeah, do.
How this works, because their budget went up 34%.
Now, when they submit their budget to you, do they give any explanation? No?
They kind of do, sort of, in an email, I can send you that email.
Yeah, that'd be great. Whatever you have. That would be the same for the Board of Health if they had any information, or was it all verbal?
The Board of Health sent me an email saying that I should have sent them instructions with all exclamation points, so. Because, you know, how, I don't. So, pretty much, highway's going up, but I think that, that is substantially salary. I don't see a lot of big increase in there anywhere else. He brought, he actually put in less money for diesel.
Because it's trending down.
Will it continue to trend down for another fiscal year?
Probably.
It was up pretty high.
And the same with gasoline.
Yep.
So then we've got the wages. And the highway office administrative assistant is actually based on her real hours.
Right.
Last year, he took Cindy's pay and just added the COLA to it.
Oh, and the new, came in at a lower, lower rate?
Didn't use the lower rate that the clerk had, so they over-budgeted for that particular position. This, I told him this year he had to use her actual rate and the actual hours that she worked. So that's why that's a big difference. And nothing else is really a substantial increase there, so it's basically salaries, which surprises me because expenses are.
Outrageous right now.
Yeah. And, and he popped them up $1,300. So I don't know if anybody wants to talk to highway, but their budget doesn't look to me like it's, it's questionable.
I, the only thing I have to say about highway is I would like to go talk with Ryan again, which I planned on anyways, but I'm telling you guys just about the pavement management plan going forward and what he suspects and.
Yeah. If, if you're planning on doing that, you might as well cover the budget stuff while you're there. I mean, and really, it would just be a case of.
What would you like to know about the budget?
There really isn't.
There's not so much questions other than, given what the management plan is, is the expense is set where it needs to be. I mean, not that we want to put more money into it, but at the same time, we need to be cognizant of.
Yeah, materials have gone up over 34%.
Right.
So.
Since last year.
What are we going to be able to get done with that budget based on? You know, granted, we are trying to leverage grant monies where we can to do portions of the roads, but there's limited.
And I don't, this isn't, I'll bring it up, but I, I don't know where this discussion should take place. One of the issues I saw right away was that highway department is doing grass cutting and weed whacking, for instance. I don't know if that's a good use of their time.
I don't know any highway departments that, unless they're in a big city, that don't do that for the town. They do lawn maintenance for the town buildings.
Really?
Yes. They mow, they mow the fields for the, for the bogged fields, they, they take care of all the cemeteries, they take care of all the municipal buildings. In every town I've worked in, that's how it's worked. But I've always worked in towns that are of a like size to Brookfield, so that is a normal function of the highway department. They also have seasonal people that come in and assist with that, that maintenance as well. And they have a new, a whole new person, which they didn't have before, because we didn't hire them, like, super lickety-split out of the gate when the new fiscal year started, did we? I don't remember, honestly.
That was pretty quick, actually.
Was it? But that should lessen the burden, or at least spread the workload, having a whole, another full-time person there.
Don't they use the, I know there's a program for, say, seniors to help work off some of their tax obligation, and I think some of that is doing some of the mowing.
I'm not familiar with them using any senior abatement people, but that doesn't mean they don't, it just means I don't, I don't know about.
They have one, they have one that comes in and does the, the tax work off.
That's great.
I got a question if I may ask. We hired a fourth highway guy, and we're still keeping all these seasonal people on? I mean, what's everybody really doing?
We only have one, one seasonal people.
They were going to go white, white, get a fourth guy.
Madam Chair, through you?
Sure.
The, the seasonal worker budget decreased after the hire of the new full-time person.
Increased?
Decreased.
Oh.
Went down.
Oh, by how much?
Uh, let's see, by about one, almost half, 17 and change to 10,000.
From what was it before, 10?
It was 17 in the latest budget, if I read this right.
Oh, it was down to 7,000.
Yes, it, almost half.
Yes. So it's a 13%.
I don't see that.
Kelly, I'm looking at the, there's a seasonal worker.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, so the seasonal worker for FY '22, and FY '23, we cut, cut it down.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's, it's, yeah, okay.
It's stayed there, so.
Close to there, yeah.
So, so go through, so cemetery.
Who was the other partner?
Cemetery wants to do paving, and they're supposed to work with Ryan to get a bid and a quote, so that they can fix the roads in the cemetery.
So that's not under expenses, I'm assuming they're going to do a warrant article for that?
I don't know if they're going to do a warrant article, we were talking to CMRPC about grant money for it.
Okay.
And.
And I think the state's also.
And I think Ryan said he would use town funds and Chapter 90 money, but I don't know where he thought that was going to come from.
You can't do Chapter 90 for that.
I'm just saying, I don't know where, I don't, this is all hearsay, because I'm not part of that conversation, so. But that's something that you might want to talk to Ryan about, to see if that's on his radar in this budget, because Mike is saying that he had spoken with Ryan about getting the cemetery's.
Roads repaid.
Roads repaved, repaved, yeah.
So, Mike.
It wouldn't be repaved, it would be graded probably.
No, they're paved, they would be repaved.
All of them repaved.
Really, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not all of it, but some, a good chunk of it is.
Yeah, there are paved roads in there. And they're not in the best shape.
Maybe it's because they're not in good shape, I didn't realize they were.
Maybe.
So, there's not anything that really spikes out on council on the aging, although they did increase their expense a couple thousand.
They actually did, didn't.
Oh, no.
What they did is they shifted the Medicare cost into their programming cost, so that they could offer more programming, because no one's using the Medicare.
Yeah, and that way, by combining the budgets, they can make better use of it.
Right.
Is that what we just talked about yesterday with CMRPC?
Okay. And then Medicare's refusing, or, West Brookfield has not given us any of the data we've asked for, so I've told them not to pay the bill. It's a $4,000 bill, that it could be one person using that service, and that is a very expensive cab ride.
Yep.
And so until they can tell us how many towns are involved, what our portion is, how it's divided, and what kind of use we have, then I can the money. And then I, I'm the one who told them to take that money and put it into their expense account, because it level funds their budget.
Right.
And increases the programming at the same time.
And honestly, yeah.
That was one of the things that was really big that came out of the master plan public input, was that more programming for seniors.
Yep.
And they're actually doing a great job, I got to give high kudos to the Council on Aging, because of all the programming that they've implemented over the last year.
It looks like Veterans was level funded predominantly.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he had asked for. I don't see, town clerk may want to increase his budget for the elections, wages, and expenses. That's something in light of what just happened. They may want to talk to Mike about include, increasing that.
Well, but this year's not a year for, this year's not in anything yet, right?
It's an off-year, it's a slow year.
It's an off-year, but if somebody quits and we need an election.
Then again, the, a year from, a year from now, it's going to be presidential primers, and that's going to be, those are going to be in fiscal year '24.
Ew.
We will have that.
Yep.
Whee! Kelly, before we get too far beyond the Veterans agent, are we doing a good job of submitting for our reimbursement of the expenditure? My understanding is we get reimbursed for 75% of the Veterans money we spend?
That's a lurid question, and I don't have the answer to that.
It comes back, it comes back in the cherry sheet.
It comes back, but we, but my understanding is we have to put in for it, and if we're not putting in for it, we don't get it. So it's just a matter of making sure that we're submitting the paperwork.
I don't think I've seen a year that it hasn't come back, when I've looked at the cherry.
Or that hasn't, the right amount hasn't come back?
We don't know what the right amount is, I guess.
Or just, I guess.
So we get money back, but is it the right amount? I think that's what Tom's asking.
Are we, yeah, it's like, because if it's 75%, we're spending $85,000, then we should be getting about $60,000 back.
Which I think we get roughly 68.
I was going to say, that order of magnitude, that's roughly what it's come back.
Okay, I don't remember what the number is, I mean, if.
Off the top of my head, I don't either, but it, that sounds right, if that makes any sense.
Okay, and for some reason, I thought that money would come back from the federal government, not the state, but it's a, it's a state?
It's a state thing.
No, that comes, that comes in on the, on the cherry sheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, not the cherry sheet, I'm sorry, it comes in on the, in the budget, like, the estimated receipts and the estimated expenses.
And ultimately, it might track back to some sort of federal funding, but it comes to us via the state.
Right, we deal with the state.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's who cuts the check.
Yeah, it's just like CDBG is technically federal funds, but it comes through state awards.
Okay.
So.
I think it's 68. I seem to remember that number being in there.
That sounds roughly that way.
In offset receipts.
Thank you.
The tree warden, I see that obviously jumped up, did he get a, did he submit, I saw something.
That report is amazing. Isn't it? I was like, woo!
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was forwarded to everybody, it's in your mail so.
Oh, I saw it with just, there was like a few trees, yeah, no, and it was pretty, like, he actually has a.
That was just, this is what I've done in the last month, I'm like, oh!
Right.
Wow!
That's what I did with my summer vacation.
You're a real tree warden, yeah.
Well, where'd he come up with the, I mean?
There's an explanation, which I can, I can send you, and it's, it's very logical.
I didn't miss something.
Part of it is, no, part of it is, he, he wants to have specific, he has certifications he needs to keep up, so there's only a few hundred dollars in there for that. But he's earmarked some very large trees that need to be done, and, and cataloging the trees and make, in doing, it's, it's actually, it's a well-done request. And I'll see if I can, I know that I forwarded everything I got to AdCom, but I didn't forward you guys everything I got, because you would have been absolutely inundated with emails. But I do have them compiled, I also have them printed. But I can, I can send it, but it's, it's definitely worth the money. One tree can take $5,000.
Oh, no, I know.
We had a $5,000 budget.
Four seems like a lump.
Well, we still have, we still have the money in the articles, so we had put aside 60,000, and there's roughly 54 and change left, because some of it was used to do some tree work over this last summer.
Oh, so there's like a bank account sitting there?
Yes, yeah, we do, we have a bunch of money that we set aside a couple years back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we knew that we had a backlog of trees.
Right.
Hmm.
So he never, he hasn't, I mean, we voted for that years ago, so it never really got touched.
Correct. It was two years ago, I think, in 2021, you voted for it, I think, I'm not positive.
Yeah.
And, and it was not touched until this summer.
Right.
Right.
So, that's something that I'm sure is going to be depleted in a very helpful way to get the trees.
Yeah, well, some of the trees I saw.
Yeah.
And so are we going to be paying for his certifications?
Well, he is certified, so, so it would make sense that we would, we would assist him in maintaining those. I know that.
That's really the only, that's all he's going to cost us, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all he's going to cost us, yeah.
I, I had heard some concerns from people who had seen the budget that thought, and I didn't get a lot of detail on it.
He's, he's already earned the like $400.
Yeah, that he's asked for, he's, he asked for two, I think, two certification classes, and I think they, they run somewhere between 200 and 300 total.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. And that's it, he's not asking for any pay.
And given that, given that he's not asking for pay, I see it, and given the quality of the work, I see it as a bargain to help him maintain his certifications.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and he clearly knows what he's doing, and this is what he does for a living, is a full-time job as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, just reduce the town's liability by getting rid of those trees that are going to fall on someone someday.
Well, there was just an incident, I don't know how much people, it happened to be a woman my mother works with on 148, and it came right through the car, like, maybe a month ago now.
Your mom works in West Brookfield, does she know?
No, no, no.
Oh, so another one?
It was in Brookfield.
Oh, my God, I know.
Yeah.
But the woman that, that was hit, that I'm aware of.
No, she didn't, the police, she filed a report with the police department. I actually questioned to see if she was going to try to come at the town for anything, but I don't think so.
So, there was an incident, oh. So there was an incident over the summer, which is another thing that, you know,
Oh, on Long Hill Road.
Another one of the dry Yeah, where a tree was caught, and it fell onto a car that was in the, in the road. And it was nicked by the mower. And it took, nicked, it, crash. And so there was, there was a claim for that. Soft tissue injury. Sudden stops can be hard on you. Even if there's no bones involved, you know?
So
So, so, yeah, so the Tree Warden's budget is, I mean, we, I'll send you the information.
So now it makes sense why it's only 12.4, we're sitting on that much money.
Yeah, that's, that's because we still have, we still have a bank account to work on. Highway, we've already talked. Board of Health, we've already talked.
Fire bounced up.
Fire bounced up.
Not, not every year that I've seen in my, you can see that they were over budget last year.
Yep.
And their wages, and their expenses. And I have a spreadsheet that shows they're over budget almost every single year.
Yep.
So
But what's, what's driving the wages increase? Because the chief and the assistant
Well, this, this wage increase was based on the 8.7.
Okay.
So when you drop it to the 3% instead of the 8.7, you're gonna see a big difference. And then we'll see where, where we wind up. Because some of these are barely bumped up at all. I don't really see anything else. Water went up, but that's cost of that's, that's primarily cost of materials. There's not but I believe they're also increasing their rates, is that correct?
We have the water rates?
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And, and I did have a question, actually. And if you don't mind
And the Commissioner's salary went up as well, and this one as well.
And the salaries go up on that, the 8.7, whatever it was, that fall in half that much, so that
Yeah.
And he did it on the stipends as well. And then, I know though, that Dennis had brought up in one of the previous Department Head meetings about getting a true secondary operator.
I didn't hear that.
Dennis, I think, Dennis and I think you brought up in a previous meeting about needing to start to plan to get a second operator.
You voted to give them permission to pursue that at one of the meetings already?
Yeah.
We're not talking about doing that this year.
Okay.
We're looking at two options. How we could get, at this point, we're looking at part-time. It's kind of complicated.
Yeah, it's complicated, yeah.
Yep.
So other than that, I think we're, I think we're good. I already explained the, the increase in the insurance. Amy lowballed it. But then the insurance company came back recently, like, within the last week, and said, nope, 10%. Which is one of the reasons we're looking at another insurance company for liability insurance.
Yep.
See if we can chop that a little bit.
Kelly, are we looking to centralize the utilities on the budget?
Only the electricity.
Okay.
Everybody has a different idea of what utilities are. Which I found out, and my language wasn't clear enough, when I asked people. I said, just say, give me your utility, because to me, utility is electric. And I should have just said, I just need the electric bills, because I want to see what we're spending on electricity. And people sent me their electric and their cable, and their, their heat. And I'm like, no, 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 I just want electricity. So that's all I, I wanted to do, is just do the electricity. It'll make things much easier in accounting. It won't change the price. Everybody's gonna have to still pay their own bills. We're not centralizing the payment. We're just centralizing the account so that it's trackable.
Okay.
And, and just for your awareness, one of the things that came up again at the Department Head meeting was there's like $33,000 that we overbudgeted for debt this last year. That the only place you can allocate it is debt. But we need a town hall, or we need a town meeting vote in order to do the reallocation.
Okay.
So
I was proposing that, that we take free cash, and we pay off 18 Common Street. And we can reallocate that debt toward that paydown, reducing what we actually have to use out of free cash to pay off the entire loan. And then we just own 18 Common Street, no more interest, no more payments.
So we, so basically, we plan to, you're thinking, we'll plan to pay off 18 Common Street.
Yes.
Some of that will be free cash, and some of that will be reallocated from fiscal year '23 debt that was overbudgeted.
Yes.
Yes, well, it's actually fiscal year '22 debt that, that hit the, hit the free cash for '23.
But it's an encumbered form of free cash?
But we, yes, but we can only use it for debt. So, so we're gonna take that and wipe it off of the free cash deductions. So that'll help our free cash next year.
Makes, makes sense to, if that's all we can use it for. Hey, find some debt and pay it off.
So are we, are we good for tonight relative to the budget? Because I'd like to move on to the executive session.
I'm good.
Okay, great. So
So we have to make a funny motion?
We have to make a funny motion.
Do we have minutes to approve? Do we have minutes to approve for the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, we do.
And I'm sorry, Beth, but that should only take a few minutes.
Yep. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for 216, 23, and 6917?
Right, I move that we approve the minutes for those two meetings.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for keeping me on track there, gentlemen. So I need a motion to move to executive session